I'll call the council meeting for the month of February to order. Welcome everyone. Thank you guys so much for coming out and everyone just watching online. Thank you for joining us online. We open up normally with our prayer and our pledge. Council, would you lead us in prayer?
Father, in heaven, we just thank you so much for all the many blessings. We thank you again that Master will just look beyond our fathers still blessing us according to our need. Oh God, we just pray again tonight that you will just bless this meeting. We just pray that this meeting be guided by the Holy Spirit and your holy word. And Father, we just pray for those that are less fortunate. We pray that Master that you bless our marriage, bless the council, and bless each one that are sitting here tonight. And God, we don't want to forget about those that are less fortunate. This we pray in Jesus's name, amen.
Face the flag, I pledge allegiance to America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We call the Romans.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Golden?
Here.
Mr. Lau?
Here.
Mr. McKenney?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
All right, we have one set of minutes to approve from our council meeting in January. If there are any changes or corrections, anything to those minutes, if not, is there a motion to approve?
I vote to accept them.
I have a motion, Ms. Miller. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Woods, if you would cast your votes. Motion, Karen. Next, we move on to my report. Offices be closed next week, the seventeenth for President's Day. So everybody, just remind everyone we close and trash pickup will be delayed by a day. TML down the hill, Tennessee Municipal League down the hill will be March the third through the fourth. I think everybody has, that's planning on going, has reached out to Ms. Carebird. If not, make sure you, make sure you get with her tonight to let her know so she can make sure she gets everything booked for that. We need to reschedule the council meeting for March. Trying to see, let's see some dates that work for everybody. I'll be, it's right now it's the tenth, but I'll be in DC with Southwest Development District. So I ask you guys, can we do the seventeenth? Is that a yes or no?
I'm on spring.
You got plans for St. Patrick's?
I'm on spring break starting that week.
Third, the twenty-fourth, y'all thought some, the third one works. Eleven? I will be back the, I'll be back Wednesday. What's everybody? It'll be a delay, it'll be a few weeks, but I have the twenty-fourth. We usually try to keep it on a Monday, but. That's the TML conference. I have the twenty-fourth for everybody. Alright, so we'll reschedule for the twenty-fourth at six.
I appreciate you all.
I was gonna say, we did that for you, Karen.
Hey, 'cause I'm gonna be in, I'm not gonna tell you.
Twenty-fourth of March. Also, a few things that I've added. I don't know if you guys did, or you might have saw it or didn't, I don't know, but you, if you got a, we got a letter from the comptroller regarding our audit being delayed, or the filing of the audit being delayed. I had a couple call about that, but what that is, our auditors, they are delayed in submitting the day. I have it submitted this week. Ms. Katie, at our, with our auditing firm, they had some staffing issues that delayed that being sent in, but they got the extension and it'll be sent in, they said before this week is out. So just wanted to let y'all know about that, if y'all received that letter. Y'all have a flyer in front of you for the Black History Musical. It's gonna be at the theater. Ms. Vicki asked me to share this with you guys. Be at the theater at six o'clock on Sunday, the sixteenth. So if you don't have anything to do, if you wanna come out, they usually have a good program. And also the annual Black History, the Black History Committee Annual Service is the twenty-third at two PM at Union Hill. So if anybody in Wivee would like to attend that. That's all that I had on my report. I had a couple council members calling, asking me to add Mr. Johnny Nelson to the agenda, but we already, had already put it out. But I just said I would bring him up under my report. He had, he wanted to address the council. So Mr. Nelson, Will, you can come at this time.
Good evening. Good to be here. I'm Johnny Nelson. Member, Zion Temple, Washington, nine six in McTevick Street, Baltimore, Tennessee. This is my name. And what we're here for is, we have over six hundred signatures saying that they agree. Hazegrove Street should be changed to Crowder, and Nayla Street should be changed to Nelson. So that's what we're here for. And elaborate on that here, that we've owned property on that street since nineteen fourteen on Hazegrove. And we own property on Nayla Street in nineteen fifty-three, fifty-two, nineteen fifty-two. Our mother built the house, Hazegrove. So all of the older ones that the street was named after have passed on. And I just think that we should, if we could, if y'all see fit, put it in our name, since we still own it, and we have been a great access to the county and state of Tennessee. And I think that it would be well worth it for us if you would see fit to change the name of them two streets.
Alright, anybody have any questions, thanks, Mr. Nelson? Now, I'll tell you, I've talked to Mr. Nelson, and changing street names is a very complicated process. It affects a lot of people. And when we get ready to do that, nine-one-one addresses are changed, mailing addresses are changed, tax, property taxes are changed, and it's not an easy process. I don't know that we've ever done it, but I did explain that process to him, but that's, that's a, that's a decision that the council would have to make. But we've had the, we've had this conversation before previously, and that's always been the issue that we ran into, so.
Can you tell me how many other residences are on this street?
I can't hear you.
How many other residences are on this street that you're speaking of, besides your property?
How many other people live on that street?
Oh, there, other people, there are other people. I don't know how many.
Like one or two, or fifteen? I, I don't know. Which, is that the Hill Street?
No, that's Nayla Street is the street, the EMS, OEMS building off of.
Up to Sigamore.
Uh-huh. That would, I can't say it off the top. I don't know if Mike or anybody would know. I mean, you, you're talking about quite a few. It's not one or two. It's upwards of fifty probably, at least.
I think Hazegrove, I think it might have about six.
No, Hazegrove is, that's the small one.
There you go, down.
Chris, hold on. When you guys speak, make sure you turn the mic on so they can hear.
Something that may work is, I've seen other towns do these do it honorary streets, where you don't actually change the name, but there's a sign put up honorary. That may be probably most fitting here. That, that wouldn't change anybody's information. You wouldn't have to change a lot. You know, it's more of a presentation, is what it is.
And we've done that multiple times.
I would be in favor of that, if the rest of the council was.
That sound like something that might work, 'cause there's been a few of them saying something about they didn't want their address changed or whatever, but we could do it honorary, you know, and just like Central, over by school, they changed Tiger Avenue, you know, it's really still the same street, but they, they put that sign up and that's kinda, you know, that was all about. And when I change the mail routing or nothing like that, for everybody on that street changing their address, I mean, name of their street, you know, getting mail mixed up. Well, that's what some of the complaint were coming up about that.
Right, 'cause I guess then all those residences would have to change their driver's licenses, because now their addresses have changed. It seems like it's a very big undertaking, but I think a commemorative honorary name changing and signage might be something that we, I think that's something we would all agree to do. Would that, would that make you feel okay, Mr. Nelson?
They say they can change the honorary, like honor you in, on that street. You know how they honorary, you know how they honor people and they give them a street? Like John and Shaw.
So it would be, it would have a sign up, but it wouldn't officially change it, like logistically change the address, but it would be a sign up to commemorate your family?
Mr. Nelson, Mr. Nelson, it's just like the sign that you talked to me about the other day down Mitchell Street, on the corner, that's what they're talking about.
Well, where would it?
The, the, the street name would remain the same, but honoring you by placing your name down on the corner, also on the sign.
Your name would be on the sign with the original names. Like Nayla Street, it would be Nelson. Hazegrove, Crowder, but it'll be honorary, but it won't change the address of the people out there staying there.
What do you think?
Honorary is good. But it's up to you.
Bill and Nelson, now step down.
Do you wanna think about it and come back, Mr.? You wanna think about it?
No, I'm, I'm good. I'm good. I'm good.
This is what you sent me, just right this Mitchell Street, but they, they changed honorary to this young man right here, okay? But this is what they're talking about. They can do the same thing for you.
Nelson Crowder corner.
Yeah, yeah. No, they, they, they put it right there at the place right on the corner, just like this one. Okay, now, that's gonna have to go back to the barrel, okay?
Go, go ahead, Mr. Nelson.
I understand what you're saying. I understand what all of it's saying. But where would you put the name? Where? I mean, where would you put it at?
You, you tell me where you want it at.
I want eighteen and Nayla.
Eighteen and Nayla?
Yeah.
Okay, we can't put it on the state right away. We would have to put it up, up the hill. We can't put it right there.
No, I mean, I mean, the way I showed them, the way we did over there, it would put where another sign was.
Yes, sir, but that, that intersection right there is on a state highway. We would have to put it on a, a city road.
John and Shaw have to do that. State representative have to do state roads.
That corner right there.
Oh, that's, that's state road, Nayla Street.
I can put it right by your house if you want me to.
A state?
Right by this speed bump.
You know, you know where the, the stop sign is, and it's naming the street names out. Hazegrove and Nayla. That's where they talking about they can put it.
Yeah, you could just make it Nelson Crowder Corner right there.
Well, where would you put Crowder?
On the sign that said Hazegrove.
Hazegrove, isn't that the one you want it on? Hazegrove and Nayla, right there at that intersection, that little corner. I guess we can work out the details later. We're just asking if that's acceptable. Would that work for you? Because we're willing to do that. Does that sound good?
They willing to work with you on the name on the sign, but they gonna, you can do that at a later, later date. But they agree with you if you wanna go ahead and do the honorary sign. They'll go ahead on and do it and put the name up there. I think so.
I guess that wink means yes. That's a yes.
Yeah, but when you get agency years, I mean, you know.
Alright, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. I'll get, I'll get with you. Any other public comments? Did you, we have anybody on the? Alright, starting with our standing committee reports. Under electric, they, they have a regular board meeting. There was no action at that meeting. On the fiber updates, forty-two hundred active customers, two, two hundred seventy-two business customers, seventy-one waiting connection, fifty, forty, forty-five, forty-four total customers, and having a take rate of forty-two percent. BA will also be closed on President's Day. That concludes BA's report. Next is the utility department. Mr. Nelson?
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Utility board met. We met February fifth and discussed the following. We replaced our new computer in our water plant. A two H is scheduled, that's our engineer for the art money, to rebid one of our sewer projects in, on February twenty-sixth of this month. Our washout on one twenty-five is about eighty-five percent complete, and we're still trying to get the Altitude Valley in. It's a tank down here at Lauderdale, weather permitting. We had a inspection from T-Puck on our public awareness and found no violations. They will be back in July to do a field assessment. And we also received a first payment of our marketing assistance program that promotes eight-one-one awareness, and we'll receive the second one in July. And the gas prices for February was seventy-two cents. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Let's fire Chief Price.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My report, fire call had a total of fifty fire calls, had forty-three in the city, seven in the county. I had thirty-two EMR call last month, MVA's two, fire alarm six. Training hour had two hundred twenty-seven, two hundred twenty-seven training hours, smoke alarm installed with fourteen, fire code inspection was nineteen. We also awarded Tennessee Fire State Marshal Office grant, thirty-two, thirty-two thousand four hundred dollars. With that, we're gonna get turnout. We've been going by turnout gear with that. Our turnout gear coming up, they ten years coming up, ten years old, we're gonna have to start getting rid of it. Just right here, not gonna have enough to pay for all, get all the turnout gear we need, so we probably doing something in the budget. When budget come around, we'd be asking for money for turnout gear, because once it turn ten years old, guys cannot go and structure fires and fight fires with old turnout gear on. Last, last meetings, someone asked how are EMR going? EMR, I got, put this, did y'all get this in y'all package? EMR going, to me, it's going pretty good. But I got some of the guys back there that run an EMR. If you guys wanna talk to some of them guys, talk to them, ask them how it going. Me, myself, I think it's going well. I don't run it, so I can't tell you the ins and outs, the likes and don't like, but ask them guys. I got a couple guys back there that are running EMR. Me, myself, I think they loving it. So, but anyway, today already, we have, we have, we started running EMR in October. Right now, we're around a hundred fifty EMR calls. And God, we don't go into the county. I think we might be in the county maybe three times by accident that dispatch pages out. We still ran it, but all these calls, it's in the city of Baltimore. We go, we don't go out, run EMR outside the city limits. We do have a class coming up, starting next week, that the rest of the firefighters gonna be going through EMR class and get them guys certified that we can have, maybe hopefully we get maybe up to ten, twelve guys start running EMR. We do have one volunteer gonna be going through the class too. And Mr. McKenney, you gonna like this, we got a grant. They're gonna pay them guys overtime for getting training. We won't have to pay them overtime for coming to training. I know you like that, don't you? And that's, that's my report. But talk to the guys, y'all want to talk to them when y'all finish, just talk to them how EMR going.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Appreciate it. I just wanna say while we, they are here, thank y'all for stepping up and taking on that extra task to do that. Anytime we can give an extra service to the citizens, it's always good, so absolutely, thank y'all. Did y'all have anything y'all want to say? I put y'all on the spot, y'all here. What'd he say? Wanna raise, okay. We'll talk about that next meeting. Alright, thank y'all. Next, Chief Jones, police.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
I, I can pass on that those guys have been out with us so far on a shooting incident. They've also delivered a baby, so. There's things that they've done, that they're putting, buttoning them hats on and coming on with us, so I appreciate that. My report just follows calls of service, or five hundred eighty-five calls of service, a hundred and eighty citations, sixteen accidents, five were injured, eleven property damage. We've had fifty-seven arrests, four juveniles, fifty-three adults. Special events was the Martin Luther King Parade. We did fourteen saturations and we had two hundred and sixty-four hours of training. concludes my report. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Lex Parks and Rec, Mr. Ford is not here. He had the privilege and pleasure of being at the Super Bowl, so. I let him off of that. Next, he gonna have to take me. Streets of Sanitation, Mr. Mayfield.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Department head, general public, Jerry Mayfield, Baltimore Streets Sanitation. This is my report. We had two hundred and sixty-nine tons commercial, hundred and forty-two point five tons residential, and for a total of four hundred eleven point one five tons of trash. We done a demo on two houses in the city, seventy-eight point five one tons. We're still doing our leaf pickup, leaf and brush pickup, of course, and we finished our bulky item pickup. We went ahead and extended it, finished it out last week.
Thank you, Mr. Mayfield.
Thank you.
Lex, Library, Ms. Zusk.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Financial report, we took in nine hundred and fifty dollars and twenty cents. We had a total of six law programs with thirty-eight participants. We had a total of seven passive programs with two hundred seventy-two passive program usage. We had six hundred and seventy-three estimated January patronage count. We had twenty-seven meeting room bookings with forty-nine guests. We had one thousand eight hundred and twenty-one total circulated materials, two hundred and seventy-five computer users, two thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine Wi-Fi users, six hundred and forty-three read users, ten history room visits, one microfilm usage, ten materials circulated in history room, twenty-eight interlibrary loan borrowed, and twelve interlibrary loaned.
Thank you, Ms. Zusk. Next, I'm Mr. Watkins. Compliance and zoning.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You should have a copy of my report. Building consultation, six, permits written, one, building inspections, three, plumbing inspections, three, mechanical, zero, certificate of occupancy, one, courtesy notices, twenty-five. Also, I want to thank Mr. Mayfield and the Street Department. They saved us a bunch of money by doing the hauling on the two houses that we demoed. I appreciate them doing that and the mayor giving them the time to do that, because it took, it took all day, but we got it all done in one day, so thank you again.
Did we get all those cars moved?
Have not gotten them moved yet. There's, we, we got weather.
It's not all, all over there, yeah, it's too wet. We'll get back.
If we, if we go in there now, we're gonna have to pay for fixing the yard, so no need to create another, one problem trying to fix another, so we'll be patient. We get it.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Tourism and Community Development, Mr. Hill.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
You have my report there. I attended the Hardeman County Three Star Meeting here at City Hall. Was accepted to the twenty-twenty-five Retail Academy for the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development. Will be attending that at the end of this month, and began the process of preparing for this year's Baltimore Bicentennial Celebration. So as the year progresses, we're gonna be giving out some more information on that, but it will be taking place the week of the barbecue festival.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Next, our planning commissioner, Mr. Golds.
Baltimore, Baltimore Regional Planning Committee met on the twenty-seventh. We reviewed the Urban Miller Rizone Request for twenty-twenty-five Cliff, Cliff Road. This property is in, in the city urban growth boundary area. After discussing the hearing from the past property owner and the current property owner, the commission voted to send a favorable recommendation to the county commission to rezone this property. This is land out on, uh, let's see. Cliff Road, and it's a building out there that this lady bought, and they want to rezone that too.
That's off of Eighteenth South.
Eighteenth South, turn up in there. In review, the site plan for same car lot, this will be located on Tennessee Street. The commission approved the site plan, couldn't just, on getting reviewed, made, made, made that were addressed during this meeting. This is over by Jack's. It's a piece of land over there. They wanna do a car lot over there. And we approve that for him to have a car lot. It's gonna be between Jack's on Eighteenth South. It's a little spot right across there. If you get that and you know exactly, okay, okay. In review, the text amendment to the Hardeman County Zone Resolution, after reviewing the discussion, the commission sent a favorable recommendation to the county commission to adopt this amendment. That concludes my report on planning commission.
They're on Cliff Road, two twenty-five, that's right there. Where do the city limit stop on Cliff Road?
So, that's, that's outside the city. It's in the urban, it's in the, it's our urban growth. So that's why we have to approve it, then the county have to approve. DEFCO meeting is scheduled for the twenty-fourth at five, so put that on your calendar.
Twenty-fourth of this month.
Carebird, I just wanted to confirm the Historical Zone Commission meeting, is it still this Thursday? And we have invited Steve Malinowski, who is our commissioner, who's over the Historical Commission. He's supposed to try to come.
Say that date again, so they can hear you.
This Thursday, the thirteenth. It's five o'clock, is it? At five o'clock, he'll be here, and we are hoping, as of right now, our representative for West Tennessee for the Historical Commission is gonna come and try to give us some insight on some projects that we can get done around here as far as taking care of, in particular, some of our African-American historical sites that we would like to make sure get preserved and maybe events refurbished.
Alright, thank you.
Happy Black History Month.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, moving on to old business. At the second reading of ordinance twenty-five zero zero one, ordinance to amend the official zoning map to rezone property located at. to rezone property located at Two O Three, Union Street from R One to B One. This is our second reading, so we'll, uh, before we do our second reading, we have to have a public hearing. So, is there a motion that we can, um, leave from Executive Session to the public? Motion by Mr. McKenna, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Woods, if you would, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Care, we are now in the public hearing section, uh, Ordinance Twenty Five Zero Zero One. Is there anybody from the, uh, public that would like to address the council? If not, is there a motion to reconvene into Executive Session?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Law, or second, second by Mr. McKenna, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Care, is there any questions? This is the rezoning of that property on the corner of Union and, uh, Jackson Street.
It's for small businesses.
Uh, they talking about doing a, putting this food truck there.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
That's what Barry was pulling.
Yeah, right. Is there any other questions, ladies and gentlemen? If not, is there a motion to approve Ordinance Twenty Twenty Five, I'm sorry, motion to approve Ordinance Twenty Five Zero Zero One? Motion by Mr. Woods, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Miller, all in favor, say, I'm sorry, cash your votes. Motion, Care, now we're moving on to the reading, second reading of Ordinance Twenty Five Zero Zero Two, ordinance to amend Ordinance Twenty Three, relevant to the city municipal code, Title Twelve. Um, we'll do the same thing, be opening up the floor for public, uh, comment, is there a motion to?
So moved.
Another motion by Mr. McKenna, is there a second? Second by Mr. Miller, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Miller, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion, Care, we are now in the public hearing section of Ordinance Twenty Five Zero Zero Two. Anybody here like to address the council? Alright, the motion to reconvene.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McKenna, second by Mr. Law, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Care, um, now we're back in the Executive Session. This is updating the, uh, international, our building code to match the International Building Code with the state law. Uh, updating the, what, which one is it? The Energy Code, two thousand eighteen Energy Code. Is there any questions on that? Alright, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ray, there a second?
Oh, we're not voting, oh, I'm sorry.
We need a second on, second by Mr. Brown, now you can vote, Larry, go.
Well, I don't need it. My bag, I forgot. Big area.
Well, that's most, yeah. Motion, Care.
I don't got to that.
Next, oh, we are second reading of Ordinance Twenty Five Zero Zero Three, uh, ordinance to allow partial payment on real property, on tax, profit, real property taxes. Um, same thing, we'll need to convene into public hearing, is there a motion?
I move.
Motion by Ms. Miller, is there a second? Second by Mr. Brown, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, uh? Alright, motion, Care, we're in the public hearing section, if anybody would like to address the council on, uh, Ordinance Twenty Five Zero Zero Three, to allow the payment of partial payments on real property taxes. If not, is there a motion to reconvene?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ray, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Woods, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Care, any discussion on this? We'll be allowing citizens to pay partial payments of fifty dollars, no, I'm sorry, no less than fifty dollars on their property taxes throughout the year. Alright, any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve? How y'all voting already, is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve, Mr. Golds, a second?
Second.
Uh, go, a second by Ms. Ray, all in favor, cash your vote.
I had a question, but I guess they voted, so that's alright now.
Go ahead, you gonna ask a question?
They pay fifty dollars a month.
At least.
At, at, at least a fifty dollars, and when the, uh, it's due, what, February, in February, right?
Twenty eighth of February. The last day of February.
Yeah, twenty eighth, it's twenty eighth, because I paid my. But, uh, they have to pay it all at once.
It has to be paid by the, the last day of February.
Yeah, okay.
Now you go, now you go.
Now I can eat it, alright.
Motion, Care. Alright, next we're moving to new business. I have a resolution Twenty Twenty Five Zero Zero Two, uh, resolution to any certain territory, uh, ring consent by owners and incorporate the same within the boundaries of the city of Baltimore. Uh, what this is, the resolution for, uh, Watson Forum, uh, bringing it into the city for our industrial development area. So, we have to pu, approve this resolution and it will become official after that. Any questions on, on that resolution? Alright, is there a motion to approve Resolution Twenty Five Zero Zero Two?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ray, or second by Mr. Williams, would cash your votes. Motion, Care. Now we have the approval of construction bids for Two, Two Twenty Two East Sycamore Street. And you guys, if you may or may not remember, we got the home grant, the housing grant from USDA. Uh, we have to approve those bids. Southwest is pretty much doing the grant management and all of it, and they have those bids here that they received with the, uh, first bid being from Turnbull Construction, seventy-nine five, seventy-nine thousand five hundred. The second bid was from ACS LLC for seventy thousand. Uh, both of their contractors licenses are, um, are good. And my recommendation and this, uh, recommendation from Mr. Skihane at Southwest Development is to take the low bid from ACS LLC.
I just have a quick question, is this the first, um, this is the first approval so far?
Oh, yes, hold on, yes, ma'am.
And this is on Sycamore Street, is this Janelle's house?
I'm not aware, I think so.
I think so.
Yeah.
Sycamore, yeah. I didn't know this process was that slow, but it takes a long time.
It's very slow, and it, it reminded me how slow it was, and I'm really upset about it, but.
Oh, I bet she, uh, this, not upset, and once you get it done, once you get that worked on.
We, this last one we did was, what, four, five years later? Four year, uh.
It must be done in two.
Right, but we had, that on the last, we had lots of prob, go ahead, Mr. Woods, I'm sorry.
You're good, what all does this, uh, incorporate?
Uh, I don't know, and all I know is remodeling and upgraded to fit, uh, cold energy efficiency. Um, so what all is in the bid, I, they had the bids, I don't, do we, we have a copy, I can get a copy. Okay, she has a copy, but that's what it, what all it tells.
So if we take the low bid, how much would that leave in this?
The, the balance, I, it, I don't, we, it was four hundred thousand, it's all, I don't know if all of that was, all of that was in construction or not, because they have, uh,
Some administrator.
Administrator fees and stuff like that. I will tell you, uh, Matt, we brought it up, last time we did this grant, we put a limit of, I think it was like thirty-five, forty thousand a house, thirty-five a house, and I was upset USDA didn't do that this year, which meant it was less people that we could actually spread the money to. Um, but, help is help.
Grab, it's a lot for one.
Well, yeah, that, I, I felt the same way, but you, it was a, the terms that USDA did. And when moving forward, if we decide to do this again, I would like for us to go back to that part where we could, you know, share the pot a little more over more people, but.
Right.
Um, so once this is complete, they'll move on to the next person on the, on the list.
So it's one at a time, so?
Yes, uh-huh, once they get this, and then we'll start on the next one and just go, you know, follow along with that.
I think Mr. Skihane said, though, even though a lot of people applied, once they go through their process, a lot of people aren't, don't qualify for so many different reasons. There's so many reasons for you to not qualify, unfortunately, because I applied. And, uh.
You didn't qualify.
You're right. They say I don't make enough money. No.
Uh, rental property is not allowed, yeah, it was a long list of, and the application was that thing to go through all that stuff, so. Alright, uh.
Give me the names again.
The names of, uh.
Of the company, I know ACS is the second, what's the first one?
This should be, yeah. Well, that company is right there.
Is either one of these local?
No.
No. It's unfortunate.
It is.
We have, uh, is there a motion, uh?
I make a motion for the low bid.
I have a motion by Mr. Law for the seventy thousand low bid. And a second by Mr. Williams, if you will, cash your votes.
That's what, also, he said that they struggle to find local contractors to bid, to bid.
You can keep that, okay.
Do you, because it's.
But it is so busy.
Waiting on you, man.
Oh, I'm sorry. And you're halfway decent, you're just busy.
That's true. Because this is a long, long process.
Motion, Care, um, at this time, we'll, I'm, I asked for a motion that we can re, uh, we will go into an attorney-client meeting, uh, to discuss Project General Lot, and, uh, we'll go back in the conference room in the back and, uh, address this with our attorney, and then we will return, but can I have a motion that we?
I make a motion.
A motion by Mr. Williams, a second by Mr. Law to, to, to attorney-client meeting. We'll take a short reset, I'm sorry, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion, Care, we'll take a short reset to the. Any opposed, motion care, we'll take a short recess to the. Alright, um, we have a motion to, uh, open, well, I just, I'm sorry, I have a motion, I just called the meeting back to order. Um, now we're on the discussion of the, uh, la- uh, land purchase for Project General Giant. And we, what this is, uh, what we can say at this point, um, is it's a twenty-five million dollar community investment. In the city of Oliver, um, and our portion of the support of this project would be to, uh, donate land. And I'm asking the council to approve, to give me the approval to purchase this land. Uh, approval up to three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, not to exceed that, uh, and work with our attorney on the closing of that property. And we have two options. First, um, first option is, and I left that in my office, um, I think I can go by memory. First option would be, uh, taking it out of our fund balance at three seventy-five, taking it out of that and just, uh, closing, writing a check on it that way. Or we have the option to finance it with a local bank over a, I'm just suggesting a five-year period. Um, and out of the two options, it'll be up to you guys to support either one or neither at all. Um, but in the event that we decided to do a low interest, uh, well, we have four quotes from our local banks on a five-year, uh, payment. And what this, uh, looked like when it comes to the debt aspect of it, of making this payment, um. We have two loans and I left, I left that in my office, we have two loans that we've been paying. One in the amount of sixty thousand, another in the amount of seventy thousand a year that we have paid. We made the last payment on one last year, the other payment we'll be making this year. Uh, so that frees up some money there if we decided to finance this and make that payment. And then also, we've had some discussions back and forth with the county and county is taking on, has decided to take on, cover the cost of dispatch. And we are paying about ninety-two thousand for that. So that will be some money that's freed up in the budget as well, if we just, either way, like I said, uh, on the, on the financing side. I've talked to our, um, financial person, man, Lisa, we got together and either way, we can afford to do a, uh, loan and it, it won't hurt us at all. We have it paid off and, you know, we, we'll, we'll never miss that budget and just because of the, the other debts that we've have, have been able to pay off. Um, and then also you have the option of just paying it out of fund balance and, and like I said, the third option is not to support it at all. But that's our, that's where we are, so. I'm opening up the floor, I, let me give you the interest rates before I do that. So, uh, we had five to, I'm sorry, we had four. Uh, Simmons Bank was five-year at four twenty-five. Centennial Bank was five-year at four twenty-five. Bank of Hardeman was five-year at four eighty-nine. CBNS was a five-year at four ninety-five. And I was, my recommendation to the council, and I would ask the council, if we did do a loan on this to use Centennial Bank at the five-year, four twenty-five. Simmons and Centennial Bank were both the lowest, but the last few loans that we've gotten with trucks and different things, we've used Simmons Bank. So I just wanted to, you know, spread that around to some of the other banks, spread the business around to some of the other banks in the community, so. Uh, but did everybody get those numbers? Though, so my recommendation, if we decide to do the loan, right, would be the five-year, four twenty-five, uh, on that, um, with Centennial. So I'll open the floor for any questions on, um, or comments that you guys would like to make on the, on this portion of this land purchase. All right, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Woods.
My personal opinion is, is, you know, I, I feel like we gotta be fiscal responsible with taxpayer dollars. Our fund balance can more than enough cover this, we have no huge expenses coming up. Um, I get the loan, but I also think that if you got it, why go get a loan and waste, uh, that, um, that percentage, you know, paying the bank? For the money that we already have. There's no reason that we can't afford to have our fund balance, we got a lot of things opening up, um, dispatch, two loans that are, uh, one just got paid off, one's gonna be paid off. Um, so it'd be my personal opinion that we just take it out of the fund balance, that there's no sense in getting a loan for money that we already have.
Alright, I'm sorry, uh, eh, was, I, I was gonna recommend Caroline, but.
Oh, no, I didn't have anything to say.
Oh, so, okay, go ahead, Mr. McCann.
I, 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 I think we need to go in and take a loan now, because the fact that our fund balance is for emergency. Uh, and the way things going this year, I know the next four years, you know, telling what we're going to have to pay out. So that's the money that we need to hold back. If we got the money to pay it, pay for it, that's what we need to do, borrow the money and just pay it out. But just going to a fund balance, I, I, that's, that's what a fund balance is, is for emergency. You know, uh, something happens in sanitation, anything can happen, uh, that we don't foresee, but we will have the money just in case. So I'm, I'm not for the, uh, taking out the fund balance, I'm for the, uh, the, uh, four point twenty-five percent. Borrowing money from the bank myself, cause we got the money to do that, since America said it. Nine-one-one, we don't have to pay and another bill to, two more bills we don't have to pay, so there's no need of going into the fund balance.
Are you looking for a motion to approve the project of the buying of the?
Uh, we can do it separately, but I was, uh, the financing, approving the financing would be approving the project, so. Uh, we don't necessarily need approval on the project as much as we just, I just need the approval for the purchase.
I make a motion that we.
I, 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 I didn't know if we were done discussing. I just wanted to say, I agree with you, Mr. McKinnon, uh, especially with our federal government right now, uh, shutting off different funding, uh, for. And we, we have no idea, uh, what, um, First Lady Musk is gonna do. So we got to, um, be, keep, stay prepared, because, you know, if we, we lose some grant funding. Or any other kind of funding that we have already, that's already been promised to us, we see that promises are not always kept. So we can't, you know, empty our coffers right now, that wouldn't be wise.
I'd like to make a motion for us to approve the four point two five from Centennial and borrow the money to do this project.
I second that, I second that motion.
I have a motion by Ms. Ray and a second by Mr. McKinnon for a five-year loan at four point two five, not to exceed three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Any other questions, comments? I have a motion, a second, cast your votes. Motion care, thank you guys so much for the support, that I'm excited about it, looking forward to it and we'll have details soon. Um, anything else, if not, then a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McKinnon, the second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Uh, Williams, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?